All right, here we go. We are live and we are back with Counselor Ian McGrath of Ward 3 here in Turo. Welcome back. We took a month off. You've been very, very busy.
I have.
So, but we are back and we've got lots to talk about, so.
I am going to try and keep it short.
Yeah, we're gonna jump right into it. So, I know there has been a lot of talk about the Stanfields development. And so that was just put in front of the Planning Advisory Committee here recently.
Yep.
So, I guess, can you provide an overview of that project? And maybe the significance to the community, to those that are tuning in?
I actually brought the handout from that committee meeting because I thought we'd be talking about this. I'll read directly from it. Summary of the proposal is a mixed-use phased development consisting of 523 dwelling units and 5,165 square meters of office commercial space in seven buildings. That includes newly constructed buildings and renovated or repurposed industrial buildings. The proposal also includes approximately 6,350 square meters of publicly accessible space along the Salmon River. So if we hold up this to cameras, see if we can.
So, and that's on, I guess, Queen, Bayview and Logan, right? Is the main areas of it. We were talking before we got on camera and it's, if you're on Queen, the large parking place they, or parking lot they have there is now going to be developed and.
That would be here in Phase 3.
And then.
Based on the plan.
There's, they've got, there's a lot going on. So it's definitely, people are, it's, it's been a talk.
It is an ambitious project, I would say.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I don't want to say aggressive, but ambitious, ambitious for sure. And as with any development done right, very exciting.
Sure, of course.
And hopefully this one's gonna be done right.
Well, I'm listening to some of what they had to say when I was watching. I mean, a lot of it sounds really great. Obviously with anything like this, there's going to be concerns that are raised, obviously.
Absolutely, yeah. One of the concerns raised, and I share this concern, is about the height of some of the buildings.
Right.
Now, not necessarily just because, oh, it's tall and a lot of people are, seem to be against tall buildings. No, it is Logan Street. So several residents on Logan Street reach out to me with concerns about these tall buildings.
Right, and their main concern is maybe like, because they have themselves have solar energy.
There are solar installations on there. And as I understand it, there are also some that were planned that might not go through if this building, depending on the shadow study.
Right.
So I know Planning Department has the ability to do that. You know, kind of do a shadow study to see what the impact would be. I know before I was elected, I sat with Director of Planning Jason Fox. I sat in his office talking about solar access because I have solar panels. There are many in the ward who have solar panels. Solar access is a, is a big thing. It cut, it's a huge benefit to the environment and it helps people stay in control of their energy costs. But if we look at this building G here, I don't know if we can see that. It's basically the parking lot of Queens, that's on Queen Street for Stanfields. And there is an 11-story proposed there as part of that, which.
That's tall.
That's tall.
Yeah, that's tall.
And when you look at the proximity there to Logan.
Right.
There is a very good chance that that is going to impact people's solar access.
Sure, sure.
So that's something that, you know, the Planning Advisory Committee had asked, I believe it was Counselor Graham had asked for the shadow study to be done.
Right.
To determine the impact.
So, and that's something that the developers are gonna go ahead and, and do? Like, is that something they're doing to address the concern?
Uh, that's a good question. I thought it was planning who did that, not the developer.
Okay.
But I can certainly take that back and follow up, see if I can find out. But, and, and I should highlight again that this is step one.
Right.
This is not set in stone. There are many changes that can happen. There are many changes that might happen.
Sure, sure.
Uh, nothing set in stone. This was, it has only been, you know, the first, first reading, I guess, or whatever, at the Planning Advisory Committee.
Right, right.
So there's more to come back.
This is something that's very much in progress. It's not, yeah, yeah, it's not something that's happening next week.
No, and even, even still, this development is probably 10 to 15 years total time before substantial completion.
Yeah.
Again, it's an ambitious project.
It's very large, yeah.
It's not gonna happen overnight.
Is there anywhere that our viewers could find this if they were looking for it?
Uh, I think it should be on the town website under Planning and Development. There is a section there for Development Agreements in Progress, which this one should be. Uh, there's one for, of ones under construction. Like, there's a couple of different things and you can go and see some of the information.
Right, perfect.
I don't know that all of this is there, but it should be, a lot of this information should be.
Right, right. So if it's something that, you know, the viewers wanted to take, take a look at, it is something that they're able to find.
Yep, and I would encourage them, if you're really interested, come to Planning Advisory Committee's next meeting. I apologize, I don't know exactly when that is, but it's usually, well, this one was June 24th, so it was probably the third Monday of the month, I would say.
So that is something that the public is able to go and.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Hear what you have to say, the questions that are, you know, that are brought before and.
Yep.
All of the information is something that you can take in firsthand if you'd like to.
Absolutely, unless it is in camera, which is usually personnel or land discussions, something that's private, right? Something that's, you know, could, if, if we talked about it beforehand, it might be a concern, right? Uh, like, we had a recent in-camera. If I told you anything that happened in that in-camera meeting.
Sure.
I could be jeopardizing.
Right, right.
Whatever we were talking about.
But this one in particular is something that the, the public is, is welcome to come to.
All of the committee meetings are open to the public. The Public Council meetings, as the name suggests, are open to the public. The Committee of the Whole, open to the public. And I would love to see more of the public there, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely, that's very important. So I know another issue that was kind of brought up, someone raised, was the question of maybe offering condos instead of apartments. That's, because it is, you know, a very, very large, um, building or buildings that are gonna kind of go up. What, what were like, what were the benefits and the drawbacks, I guess, of, that were, of each option?
Well, rentals is, is good because not everybody has the means to own. Not everybody has the desire to own.
Absolutely.
Uh, I currently own a home, but some years ago, I remember saying, I'm never gonna buy a house again. I'm gonna rent.
Yeah.
And looking at what rents have done, I'm very glad that I was, I bought and I'm glad I had, I'm privileged to have that ability to, to buy that house before the prices went completely insane.
Yeah.
But when you have, when you have, you know, a stake, when you have stability there, it's easier to make long-term planning.
Right.
Right? So for me, I know what my mortgage payment is going to be every month or every week, whatever it is, right? I know what it's going to be. And I can plan around that. I can plan for, I know what my taxes are likely to be. I can plan for the taxes and I can make all those long-term plans. And especially right now with the prevalence of fixed-term leases. A lot of people, I talked to somebody recently who said when they first moved into their apartment, four-month fixed-term lease, back to back to back, I think for two months.
I can't imagine, I cannot imagine having to live with not knowing what.
And they did say.
If that's gonna, you know, if there, if your landlord is gonna be like, all right, nope, that's the end of your lease.
It's incredibly stressful to not know what's happening from, you know, from.
And, and I mean, I know, speaking personally, because I'm on a fixed-term lease myself, from year to year, that's something that obviously is something that weighs on my mind. I can't imagine it being in four, four-month increments. That's just, it seems crazy.
Yeah, and I don't know what the deal was. Maybe the landlord had just purchased the place and they didn't know what was happening.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Um, but I mean, that person now has a more sustainable, you know, less stress-inducing lease.
Yeah.
Which is good, but that's the thing. The, the rents keep increasing and if it's a fixed-term lease, there's no guarantee that you get to stay there at the end of that lease. Without someone saying, oh, the market rate has doubled, so unless you've got an extra $1,000 a month to give us, you're out.
Yeah.
And that's incredibly stressful for people. And it's, it's hard to keep people in a town if they don't know that they're gonna be able to afford. And the last stats I saw is something like 65 to 70% of people in Turo rent.
That is a very large number.
So to have an ability, like, you know, condos or something. Now, I believe what Mr. Stanfield said at that meeting was, there might be an option for long-term rental.
Yeah.
So something that you can plan around.
Amazing idea.
It, it's a great idea because I understand, I understand why a developer might not want to offer a condo for sale. I understand why rental would be good, but a long-term rental, that helps stability for both the tenant and the landlord.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's something, you know, hopefully that comes through. Uh, but that's, that's where that comes from. It's just wanting some stability so that people can put down roots in our fantastic community.
Is there a demand, do you feel like, for condos in, in the area?
I don't know if there's a demand for condos. Uh, because a lot of people will say, well, this is what people, you know, there's a demand for rentals because everybody's renting. I'm like, yeah, but that's all that's available.
Right.
Housing's not available. And housing, you know, this gets into a complex subject because more people, more housing would be available if people who are currently overhoused could move.
Yeah.
So somebody who's, you know, a, a single person or a couple who are empty nesters, they've got a, you know, four or five-bedroom house and it's one or two people living there. That's too much house, but they can't afford to get into the apartment. So now this house that a family could move into is not available.
Yeah.
Like, there, and that's, that's one piece of a very large, complex.
Obviously, yeah, very much, absolutely. If you have any questions, definitely let us know because we will read them out. Um, Kathy says, Monday, July 29th is the next PAC meeting.
Thanks Kathy. This, I interrupt just for a second, our scheduled programming. Deputy Mayor Hinton on top of stuff.
Yeah, oh, isn't she though? Oh my goodness. As busy as you are, I feel like she's even busier.
She's busy.
Yeah.
She is absolutely busier. She does a lot. I mean, if you look recently at, on Kumane Street, the John Rawson Sons, like, she has been on top of that forever.
And what a difference.
It's a huge difference already and they're still not done. But I mean, her tenacity on working with them, because they didn't have to do that.
Yeah.
But she's been, been persistent, she's worked with them, and now we're seeing that change.
And it really has been something, I mean, I've lived here literally my whole life, that people have been complaining about for literally my whole life. So, thank you to Kathy.
Thanks Kathy.
So I know that another issue that was kind of talked about, and I mean, is kind of just an issue in the community in general, is parking. So, you know, is there something that that was addressed, the parking concerns for this particular building?
Uh, there, there would have been talk about the parking. And I'm just gonna, now, because I have it in my hand.
Yeah.
Uh, 437 spaces, which is 0.84 spaces per unit for 523 units. Uh, that's still a lot of parking. What I find interesting, the, you know, having, you know, been on council, having attended PAC committees, meetings, it's like, okay, people, the first two things most people say, what's this gonna do for traffic? And where are they going to park?
Right.
Without realizing if we can build spaces where you don't need a car, then you don't have as much traffic.
Sure.
If you make spaces for everybody to park and you encourage everybody to drive, traffic is going to be an absolute nightmare.
Yes.
Now, what, and I'm, I don't mean to like, either endorse or deny or whatever. I don't wanna, you know, flavor this development at all.
Yeah.
But this is downtown.
Yes.
It's very close to downtown. Their plan seems to mimic like a little downtown. It's gonna have a lot of shops, they say, whatever. The, um, 5,165 square meters of office and commercial space, right? Including the, you know, that, all that publicly accessible space along the river. So it'd be a great place to go walking.
Yeah.
People can go shopping. I believe Mr., it was Mr. Stanfield or Mr., oh God, I can't remember the other gentleman's name. I might have it here somewhere. But he, he had said that it would be, Mr. LeBlanc had said that this was, you know, there would be public amenity space, but also private amenity space for the people living there.
Interesting, okay.
So it's gonna be, it sounds like it'd be very walkable.
Yeah.
Everything, if everything that you need is within walking distance, within either your own little complex there or you got the Banks and Things downtown, you've got Inglis Place there, all the downtown shopping.
You don't particularly need a vehicle, yeah, which you don't need the house.
Exactly, right? And parking is extremely expensive. Uh, you know, we, I'm getting ahead of myself, but we've talked before.
Yeah.
At council and at some of these meetings, it's very expensive and parking doesn't pay tax.
Right.
It's not, it's not a good investment. You know, some, absolutely. Some people are always going to have to drive.
Yeah.
But the more we can get people out, again, active transportation, public transportation, walkable neighborhoods, it, it makes everything better for everybody.
Yeah.
Literally, the more people we can get out of their cars makes it better for people who can't get out of their cars.
Right, right.
Win-win-win.
Absolutely. So, um, I think we'll move on now to something that I think a lot of people will find interesting and it's been something that has been talked about, I guess, for, for some time, is the Inglis Street pedestrian project.
Speaking of walkable neighborhoods, yes.
Yeah, exactly. And so I know the downtown Turo is requesting a letter of support from the council.
Yep.
Um, to apply for the funding to get that economic impact study. So I guess I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Uh, well, and my thoughts are my opinion.
Yeah, of course.
And everybody has an opinion.
Yeah.
Which is the, the entire impetus, I guess, behind an economic feasibility study.
Right.
Take opinions out.
Yes.
Take emotion out. What are the facts? What is the data? What does it show?
Will it be good for the community and the economy?
Right, there are so many people in North America who will travel to Europe to vacation. And they travel to places that we can't normally build here, right? We've got the, the ground-level shops, residential, you know, two and three floor above, much like Prince Street behind us. So, you know, that's, that kind of thing. And those narrow streets, a lot of cobbled streets, you know, good for walking, slows traffic, all of that. We love to go to vacation to those places, why can't we have them here?
Right, so I guess maybe a little background on it is, the study is on whether or not it would be positive or negative to the community and the economy to have Inglis as only a pedestrian street during the summer months.
For the summer months. Now, I did ask Ms. Delaurier if there was any chance, you know, if they were planning to do any test runs.
Right.
Like, say, hey, we've got a weekend, we're going to just close it Saturday and Sunday. Sunday will be available for either just the public to use or maybe we'll invite some people in. I didn't get into this yesterday, Committee of the Whole, but like, if you had a little roller derby thing or the Turo Lions had a little Inglis Place track race or something, you know, set up some hurdles or do a 100-meter dash, whatever, something, right? It just, there, there's so much potential for that space to be used. And if the, you know, if the business owners can put out, like, you know, do a little sampler sale.
Mm-hmm.
Have a little table out front, here's a sample of what we've got, like what you see, come on in.
Yeah.
Everywhere that I have been, uh, you know, whether it's Argyle Street in Halifax, uh, I think Richmond in Charlottetown, PEI, uh, when I was down in Australia, there were a lot of these pedestrian malls. They're always happening, always full of people and life and activity and the businesses seem to thrive.
Yes, right.
With that, I'll add a ridiculous example that, uh, you know, not every business will thrive in a pedestrian mall. A car dealership would not necessarily thrive in a pedestrian mall. That's a bit of an extreme example because we obviously have no car dealerships on Inglis. But places, you know, like the, the bike shops, the pubs, the restaurants, eateries, even, I think the, the clothing manufacturers, like, well, because I've been down there. I've been walking down there. I'm like, oh, Sandy's got a sale and I should pop in and see what. Or I can pick up a new shirt or, you know, see if there's a, a suit I wanna get.
Yeah, yeah.
I can't look my best at council.
That's right. Yeah, no, I, I absolutely agree. I think it's a very interesting concept and, and I think having this study done so that, like you said, opinions are, are left out of it. Because obviously, like, you said, everyone has opinions.
Yep.
But to have this, you know, professional study done that's going to, you know, have recommendations on either, you know, yes or, or no. It could, it could be one or the other, so.
And, and I have talked to some, some business owners and some employees down there who are very positive. They think it would be amazing down there.
Yeah.
But I've also talked to some of those same people who say, you know, because I've talked about the loss of parking. 35 spaces, because I went down and I counted.
Sure.
It would be 35 spaces that could be turned over to patios or anything else. And that's another thing, you look around, everybody loves these patios.
Yeah, absolutely.
We are sacrificing parking for patios. Why can't we do that on a more regular basis somewhere, right?
Absolutely.
But it's, you know, people who have admitted to me, yeah, I park on the street all day. So who really parks on Inglis Place?
Yeah.
Is it the customers or?
Or are they just there all day?
Or is it people who are there all day, the staff and, and the owners?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't have the answer to that question, but I.
But it's definitely something that, well, and like I said, something that was, that has, is being talked about and, and that is, again, in, in the process. So it's very, I think that's very interesting.
Yeah, and that was unanimous by council to support this, yeah.
Very cool, yeah. So, and I know another thing that was brought up at the Council of the Whole was affordable housing because that is an issue absolutely everywhere. Um, so I know the last report was done in 2023 that, and it obviously stated that there's been some significant issues in, in the town. So I guess maybe, do you, can you summarize the main findings and, I guess, what their implications were for Turo?
The main thing basically, if I remember correctly, because I don't have this one on my notes, but if I remember correctly, the main thing was basically, there has been increased demand, which is, and there's also limited supply.
Right.
Right, and it's that whole supply and demand. I personally, my own opinion, think that some greed does factor in there. So some people are seeing that demand and they are raising prices because they know that they can, right? Uh, and that might be part of that supply and demand thing. And that's a problem when you have a basic human necessity, housing, as a commodity or as an investment. That's, that's a bit tricky. Now, the actual numbers, I think they said it would be a 555? That was an easy, by, by 2027, this study estimated, that's the number of units we would need. Um, and that it was 75 units per year is what we can expect to be built at the time of that study. You know, I don't know if that's changed with this new community plan that is supposed to help streamline development a little bit, make things a little bit easier.
Right.
So it's, it's not such a long tedious process. Something that took six months can maybe now be done in one if it's a site plan approval, right? But there's still going to be a gap in 2027 of, I think it was 180 units.
Right.
By 2027, if we're adding 75 per year.
That's a lot, that's a lot of people and families or, and whatever that, that can't find housing.
It's a lot.
Which could possibly mean that they have to unfortunately leave.
And, and that's the concern, like, so many people in this town rent. And the last census I looked at, I think it was 50 or 60% of people in the town work retail. It's been a long time since I've done any type of retail job. I was not making any money at it.
Yeah, right. It's not been that long for me, so yeah, I absolutely, yeah.
It's still very close to, you know, at or close to minimum wage.
Yes, yes.
And I had that stat here somewhere. I remember looking it up yesterday when Jason was talking about it and I gotta go back and find it again because I had looked it up. Uh, $650 per month for, would be an affordable bachelor at minimum wage.
And that is nowhere near what the prices are right now.
Nowhere.
Double for a bachelor, I would say.
And that, that's assuming, you know, the 30% of your take-home income is spent on, on housing because you have to have money left over for food and, you know, your utilities and your transportation, especially if that, and that's why I push active transportation so much. I'm like, if you don't have to own a, you know, tens of thousands of dollar car, if you can get around with an e-scooter or a bike or whatever.
Right.
You're, you're, you're saving a ton of money.
So much, yeah, absolutely.
I drive very little.
Yeah.
And I, like, I, it surprises me every time I go to the gas station. I'm like, oh, how much is gas? Because I, I don't.
Yeah. You're not paying attention to it, yeah, exactly.
Because it's not, it's not a huge part of my calculation. But I think about people who have to drive all the time, like, you must be spending a buck 76, I think it is right now.
Absolutely, and I don't even, I don't even travel that much. So what, I guess, are the next steps that, that were talked about at the meeting um, to, to address the, the housing shortage?
So the, the next steps for, well, this is, let's not confuse the housing shortage with the affordability framework. So what we discussed yesterday was the affordability framework. And what Mr. Fox was looking for was basically, is council aligned on the direction that we are taking?
Right.
Uh, and it's, and council is.
Right.
Right, these are things we want to work in, in concert with the county, right? Because most people, if you ask them, they don't know where the borders are.
Right, no.
Right, if you're in Bible Hill, you're in the county. But I mean, you walk across the bridge and you're in Turo.
Right.
And there's a lot of travel across those borders.
Oh, very much, yeah.
It's, for most people, it, it, it's a very blurry gray line. It's all Turo to them.
That's right.
For so many people, right?
And for people even just coming to visit and, and, you know, whatever, so, yeah.
Well, and that's the thing, I bring it up all the time. I surprised somebody with it last night. That someone said something about shoppers and, and someone's like, oh yeah, that's, that's not in town. And they went, it's not, and like, that's what Ian said, I'm like, it's not. It's not, the Shoppers Drug Mart out on Robie, the Fundy Trail Mall, all of that is in the county.
Oh, yeah.
Right, nobody knows that.
Not something I knew at all, yeah, absolutely. No, I didn't know that at all.
When I moved here, people said the highway was basically the border.
Yeah.
They were wrong.
That would've been my guess too, I guess, yeah.
Right, but, so back to your question, affordability versus the housing crisis, what we're doing to address the housing shortage is having passed that community plan.
Right.
Right, so that took effect in January of this year. So streamlining a lot of the development, like that Stanfields development, there was something there. Uh, not part of this development agreement or proposed development agreement, but this building over here, if I can show them, this H-L-shaped thing over here, that's a factory space that they are also planning to do some work on. Basically shifting the, the working portion out of these buildings over here.
Into that other building.
Into this one.
Yeah, okay.
And there's no development agreement because it's as-of right. Whatever they are doing there is within the zoning. They're allowed to do it and so instead of having to come before council, they're just like.
They can just do it.
We can just do it.
Right.
That's something that we can do. Having these development agreements takes time. Uh, but if we can say to somebody, like, this is what's allowed in the zoning. If you own the property and you have as-of right, and it's all in the, in the zoning map. So I can't, it's, don't, we don't have time to get into all of that. But it's all in there, like, if this is something I can do, as-of right, they can just go and do it.
Right.
Doesn't have to come before council.
And again, just to remind the viewers, either watching now or watching after, this, this is something you can go to the town of Turo, it's on their YouTube, and you're able to watch these meetings if you're not able to make it in person. And you can get all of this information.
All of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, if, if you are not friends with me yet on Facebook, send me a friend request uh, because I often share clips from it. I shared a link to it last night, basically the summary. Like, I think the clip I shared was basically to Jason Fox, a summary of, here, here are the five points that we are looking for council's guidance. Are we on the right track?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you get that, you don't have to sit through all two hours.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's, sometimes, because sometimes you don't have time to sit through the whole two hours.
It's true.
And being able to just get that, you know, last little rundown is, is great. So I know the next committee meeting is on Monday, correct?
Yes, the Public, Public Council meeting is on Monday, 1 o'clock in council chambers.
And so, and I know staff are going to be reviewing some bylaws and, um, I guess, ensuring that those are updated. Um, so maybe, I guess, we can speak a couple on those.[1598.10] So maybe, I guess, we can speak a couple on those. One is the taxi bylaw.
Taxi bylaw. So the taxi bylaw, which, you know, Deputy Mayor Hinton poked in earlier, she also chairs that committee, that was basically all players. So all of the local players, especially that would be impacted, the taxi companies, they all sit on that committee.
Okay.
This is, has their input.
Okay.
And that was a question asked at the June council meeting, very important, that we have input from the local players.
Of course.
The main changes to the, to the taxi bylaw essentially are allowing for, like, you know, I can't remember the name, they call it like network transport companies.
Okay.
Basically Uber and Lyft, that kind of thing.
Those kind of services.
So allowing them to say, "Okay," you know, because the taxi rates are set by, by council, and, and the taxi bylaw committee, they own the taxi.
Okay.
So that, that's where rates get set, but we don't have that kind of authority over, you know, these transport companies.
Of course, yeah.
So there has to be some sort of, you know, level there to be like, "If you were going to come and operate here, you can get like a license for this many cars for this much money or this much," you know.
Interesting, okay.
Basically, to allow, when they eventually get here, because I think they probably will.
Yeah.
When they get here, we have to have some sort of framework.
There's already something in place.
Another of the changes was basically eliminating the need for the local taxi company to have a physical building, like a physical dispatch.
Oh, okay.
Because that's, right? We just talked about housing and, you know, the rents and stuff. It's no different for commercial.
Yeah.
It, it can be expensive. And if we can empty a taxi stand or a dispatch thing and turn that into housing, maybe it's only one unit, maybe it's only two units.
Right, it's still a unit.
Whoever's there is gonna be happy to have that unit.
That's right, that's right.
Right? So, but that's leveling the field.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And I know another one that I'm sure many people will find interesting is the dog bylaw. So the first reading, it, it is going to be the first reading, or there was a first one already?
This will be the first reading.
The first reading, yeah, yeah.
So this one is a very small change, and it is part of staff's work on aligning and updating all of the bylaws. It's basically the, the price in there was like, it was, it used to be $12 per year for the dog license, now it's $25 for a lifetime license.
Okay.
I think, I don't have that one in front of me.
Sure, sure.
I am going by memory.
But there is changes, yeah.
It's a small change.
Yeah, right.
Small change to the dog bylaw, but it's part of what staff are doing. Like, when I first got onto council, one of the things I brought up was the bicycle bylaw that was enacted in like 1957 or something ridiculous, that if you didn't pay your, you know, your $2 a year registration, the punishment would be $5 fine or a week in prison. Like, that seems a little.
$5 fine.
That, that $5 today versus a week in prison today.
Absolutely.
That's.
Who's picking that?
And it turned out that that had already been repealed in 2020, but had never actually been taken off the website.
Right.
So I'm glad that I followed up on it. I played a very small part. Not as big a part as I wanted in getting rid of it, but I played a small part. And so staff are going through a lot of these bylaws, so I expect to see a lot more bylaw stuff come up.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Awesome. So I guess, before we, before we go, I know that, you know, obviously, as we've mentioned every time, but you are very busy. You have a full-time job, serve in the council, you're involved in various volunteer. I see that you're all over volunteering all the time.
Yep.
How do you manage to balance the responsibilities effectively?
Big question. How, it's, it's tough. You, you need good time management skills.
Sure.
I certainly bite off a little more than I can chew, I think, sometimes, because I have difficulty saying no to things.
A lot of people do that, but yes.
Yeah. Like, I was invited to be on another board, and I was like, "I can't take on another regular commitment." Some one-offs, like the, the Truro Parks and Rec and Bible Hill, you know, a lot of the, you know, local ones, volunteers. They're like, "Okay, we're gonna do this bike rodeo."
Right, it's like a one-time thing, and yeah.
Like, I wanna be there.
Yeah, yeah.
How do I help? Right? That, but that's, that's an afternoon.
Yeah.
So I can squeeze in an afternoon here and there.
I feel like it's hard for people that want to be so actively involved in the community to be able to say no to things that they may want to really do, but it's just, you know, it's something you have to do.
And it's that want.
Yeah.
Right? This is, this is the thing about council. I don't have to be on council.
Right.
I get to be on council.
Sure.
It is an honor and a privilege to sit in that room, and to be on these committees, and to help shape the future of our town.
Yeah.
And I, I take that very seriously, because it is a privilege, right? It's, it's one of those things where I'm like, "Are the meetings sometimes long?" Yeah.
Right.
"Are the meetings sometimes a little dull and tedious?" Certain subjects, yeah, certain subjects can be a little dull and tedious. That's part and parcel with the job.
Right.
But I get to be there by the will of the people. So that's, that's how, that's a lot of how I manage it. Because I recognize that privilege that I have to be at that table, to have my voice heard, and to help give voice to everybody who can't be at that table.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
That, and good time management.
Yeah, perfect. Well, thanks again. I guess we'll end by saying, if you have any questions or any concerns, and you wanna reach out to Counselor McGrath, you can absolutely do that. You can find him on Facebook and Instagram.
Facebook and Instagram.
Also, you can give people your email.
Yeah, ian.mgrath@truro.ca. Again, if you go to truro.ca, click on Government, Mayor and Council, you will find all seven of us listed there, all of our pictures, our little bios, phone numbers, and, and emails.
That's right. So you can reach out to your own, your own counselor as well. It's all there.
Yeah, exactly.
The information is there. Perfect, thank you so much.
A pleasure.
Enjoy the rest of your day.